A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any moment of silence? Roll call.
Alexander.
President.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Whorple.
Here.
Rickles.
Here. Nine present and in chambers. Mayor's address. Hello, Mayor.
Hello, Council President, Rickles, and the rest of the councils. Good to see you all again. This is my report for September ninth, 2024. Wanted to did something unusual today. We haven't met in staff meeting in actually a month and a half, and this morning we had a meeting with all department heads in my office. It was all three groups. Usually I meet with them one at a time over the course of three weeks. So we had a big staff meeting this morning with took about three hours for us to catch up on all the developments that are going on right now. So it's good to get back on track with my staff, but it was a real good meeting. Got on base with a lot of issues, so. Actually, over the last couple of weeks since the last time I met with you all, I also had a meeting with representatives of HAST. They had Hammond Academy of Science and Technology regarding the new school year statistics, regarding finances going on with HAST, as well as planning for their future. Obviously, with what's going on in the school city right now, they're getting a lot more interest in their school, and I want to be on the same page with HAST, so it's good that they came to City Hall and we had a nice meeting, so. Met with the Controller's Office regarding miscellaneous revenue, which obviously we're getting ready for budget season. We're in the middle of budget season on our side. Miscellaneous revenue is becoming very important to all of us with what's going on with our budget right now. We had a really good meeting with Tanisha from the Controller's Office, Megan and myself, and the Chief of Staff. Had a dinner with a representative of an engineering firm. We're starting to get a lot of firms that are interested in helping us with the lead line replacements in the water department. This is a problem that the City Hammond is going to have to deal with. Well, the Hammond Water Company, excuse me, not the City Hammond, is going to have to deal with in the coming years its directives coming from Washington, D.C. It's estimated that Hammond's problem with lead lines is probably like a $500 million problem in that ballpark. Estimated to be about 21,000 homes in Hammond with lead lines, and it's estimated to cost about $13,000 at each of these homes on the average to replace each lead line. Ultimately, that cost will have to be borne by the Hammond Water Department, and if you do the calculation, it's a big number. It's like hundreds of millions of dollars. That's just Hammond. When you think about cities like Milwaukee and Chicago and think about how much America is going to have to come up with to fix this problem in the future, that's why I don't get too worried when people talk about lead lines, being honest with you. It's such a big money problem that we can't do it ourselves. This is going to have to come from Washington, D.C., anything we do to fix it. So the Hammond Water Company is doing here and there projects, you know, a couple million dollars here, a couple million dollars there. That's great, you know, but if we do it at that pace, we'll be doing it for the next hundred years before the problem is fixed. So for us to do any real problems, we're going to have to have grants from the federal government, and these engineering firms are interested in trying to get the money for us. When I said, "Go get it." If you go get $5 million, we got plenty of work. So interesting what's going on. I've been getting a lot of those meetings lately. We held fire department battalion chief interviews and settled upon engineer Casey McCluskey as Hammond's Hammond Fire Department's new battalion chief. Engineer McCluskey, now Chief McCluskey, did a great job in the interview. He's a great firefighter, super proud and happy that he is now a chief in the department. And everybody that made the final cuts were great. It was a really tough decision, but McCluskey, we, you know, we're really proud of him. So congratulations to Chief Casey McCluskey, our newest battalion chief. Had a meeting with the city engineer on maintenance issues. The city engineer did a report for me that showed how much maintenance work is being performed on Hammond streets over the past five years. I'll make that report available to you. It's not a lovely report. The maintenance we're doing on our streets is a function of how well the casino boat's doing, really, when you think about it, and the casino boat's not doing well. And when the casino boat's not doing well, our road formula sort of fails us because there's not a lot of money there for road projects. So anyway, that wasn't a lovely meeting I had, but it's a real meeting. I mean, we're running a city with 300 miles of roads. It's going to take maintenance to maintain them, so. Mayor's night out, Fourth District, we held that. I want to thank Councilman Emerson for hosting it. It was a great meeting. A lot of people in attendance, a long meeting. Councilman Emerson did a great job, so. It was at Edison School. I want to thank them for making it available. Had a meeting with Vic Lopez, who's a young man that I appointed to open position on the Hammond Water Board. Actually, Vic Lopez is a resident of the Fourth District. Is he here? Oh, thank you. Thank you. He's the kind of guy that would be at a meeting, by the way, like this, so. Vic's a, he's of the Fourth District. He went to HAST, actually. He's a Hammond kid. He's got a really big job, and he's a great guy, so he's going to do a good job on the Water Board for us. Held my monthly captain's meeting with the Hammond Police Department. We have this meeting monthly. It was a great meeting. Met with the Port Authority staff and employees over a disciplinary issue. We handled it internally. I think everybody learned their lesson, but something went wrong. If you want to talk about it, I'm willing to talk off the air about it, but something went wrong with the Port Authority. I think we handled it well. It was a good employee that made a mistake, and I hope that that never happens again. So anyway, attended Lear Corp's 30-year anniversary, 30th year in the City Hammond. Two, they're at their second location. I attended in the plant. I was there with the Chief of Staff. All the employees came out. They're really proud to be from Hammond. That plant does really well, and the Chief of Staff learned that his truck seats were made right in Hammond, Indiana. We didn't know that before that meeting, so I appreciate that. And met with the Used Car Lot Task Force. I have four council members that are part of this task force. We have noticed over the years, the number of used car lots in the City Hammond has increased dramatically, and these used car lots, some of them look fine, most of them do not. They look like crap. They have too many cars on them. It's a dangerous situation. If one of those cars, God forbid, ever caught on fire, it'd be impossible to position our fire trucks in that lot to put those fire, put that fire out. So we are putting this task force together along with code enforcement, along with fire department, along with a lot of public safety people, and we're going to start battling this problem. I apologize it's gotten to this point, but it's unacceptable, and we'll be following this up. Police and fire negotiations haven't really proceeded much since we last spoke. We made a final offer to police. Police accepted the final offer and are going to vote on it. I personally think it's a great offer. It's generous offer. If they take it, I think it's going to stop our problem of losing police officers, okay? The cops don't love it, which means I think it's a good offer. I mean, the best offer is one where everybody's a little bit, a little bit upset with it. I think this is that offer. I'm not thrilled with it. It's paying way more than I thought we were going to. They're not thrilled with it because they wanted more. Those are usually the right deals, okay? The last deal we made to them was 100 to 0, and nobody likes that deal now. So I think this deal is a better deal. I think it'll pass probably 65, 35, something like that. So if that goes, that leaves fire and the Teamsters. Fire, I have a meeting with this week, so I'll have more to report the next time we talk. Teamsters, we're in regular meetings with. It seems like Teamsters, we're all on the same page. I think fire, we're not on the same page right now, so we're working on that. Haunted House, last time I talked to you guys, Haunted House is on the same page with the city. In fact, I just saw them put up signage on the Haunted House. It talks about the, the last year that Reaper's Row will be open, so that's by agreement, regardless of who owns the Haunted House property. They will have Reaper's Row on this year. Action items before the council tonight. Councilman Salinas, we could finally move forward. I know you know this. We can finally move forward with the resolution regarding the fill issue at the old hospital site. I know it's a lot. I appreciate your patience. If anybody has any questions, I'm available, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to be on the Used Car Task Force.
Okay, I'd love that. The problem we have is we start running into quorum issues. I'm willing to run into those quorum issues, being honest with you. I think we would just have to notice the meeting. Could I get back to you on that, Councilman? Could you call my office tomorrow so I can follow this up with legal?
Okay.
Because I have no problem if all of you want to be on it. If it was, we would just have to notice the meetings. If we notice the meetings, it's an open door. I don't care who comes to that meeting. If members of the public want to attend that meeting, it's a great meeting. I think they'd be impressed with how we handle it, so. Let me follow that up, though, okay, Councilman? Because I know we have, it's a quorum. We're right below quorum right now. If we brought you on, it would, it would break the quorum, so, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if you do run into a quorum problem with the car lot task force, I would be willing to give my spot to
Thank you.
the Fourth District Councilman.
That's sweet. Thank you. Let's follow this up tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Oh, this is beautiful. Thank you. Freaking tears to my eyes.
I've certainly said my piece about a couple of the car lots
Yes, ma'am.
in our neighborhood
Yes, ma'am.
and the councilman may know of more
Yes, ma'am.
in the district, so.
This is a, not a lovely task force. It's, I'm mad about it. We're looking at problem properties, people that are taking advantage of our neighborhood and taking advantage of our zoning codes, and I'm sick of it. And I, I know it's music to your, to a lot of you. I promise, we're staring down and bringing them up on the big screen and sending out building inspectors, fire department inspectors. It's ridiculous. And there's one that I'm responsible for as mayor, but unfortunately, there's hundreds, but I have one. It's my fault. I, and I, it looks like crap, and it's my fault that it even happened, and I admit that, and I'm mad about that one. So this is that, that's what we're doing on this task force. We're pulling up properties, putting it on the big screen. We're talking about it. We're being smart about it so that it doesn't result in litigation, but we're going to try to fix the problem, and I know that they're all over. Every one of you district councilmen have this problem, so. So thank you. So let's follow this up tomorrow.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi, Councilman.
At the West Point Industrial Complex at Columbia and 141st, that huge truck terminal has been shuttered for about a month. There's no activity there.
Really?
Wondered if you knew what was up.
I don't off the top of my head, Councilman, but that's news to me.
No activity, nothing going in or?
That's the one for Walmart, right? Okay. All right, let me follow that up, please. I'm sorry, I, I don't off the top of my head. I go in your district regularly, too. That won't escape my
Nothing else?
I'm not doubting you. Like, you know how you get used to things and you don't stare at things like you should sometimes? No, I'm going to stare at it now, because I'm in your district every day, so. Is that all? I'm sorry, Councilman. Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi, hi, Councilman.
Just wondering when
I like your suit. It's nice.
Um, just in terms of the negotiations with police and fire, what's your timeline for trying to complete those?
Well, at, thank you for the question. End of the year is the deadline, but we've had situations in the past where it went over January. When, in situations like that, nobody loves it, okay? But what we usually do, Councilman, is honor the contract if we're negotiating in good faith. Like, if we were at a total impasse at Christmas of this year, that's worrisome, right? But sometimes what you find is you're getting real close, but you just got a few issues you're trying to work out, and it's Christmas, and you're like, listen, let's come back after the holidays. We'll wrap up all these final issues. You guys will vote on it, and in that meantime, we would still hold the contract valid, you know? It's not like January 1st, sorry, we have no contract, okay? I hope that doesn't happen, Councilman. I don't anticipate it, but if it does, that's happened before. I don't want to remind anybody what union it was, but it's happened before, and we got through it, okay?
Right.
I hope that doesn't happen, though, Councilman. So our goal is to be done. I know the tough thing right now, though, is Megan's doing budgets right now. Some of these unions are like asking for the sky and the moon, so she doesn't, she's like, what numbers do we use for next year's budget? Because if they're going to be up here, if that's what we approve, she's got to be able to pay for it, so we're working through these, but I appreciate the question.
All right. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I know that we've had a smaller number of police this past year
Yes, sir.
due to them going other places.
Yes, sir.
Do you know how much we've been, we've saved because of so many fewer police this year?
Um, no, but I'm sure that there's some money saved. But if you remember, Councilman, last year, we budgeted a lot more into the budget, knowing that there'd be this huge flux of people that transferred, okay? So, but that, I don't know off the top of my head, obviously, but I imagine there's savings in there. The budget we're turning into you next year, though, even if we approve these raises for PD, should be less. So the budget you approve for 2024 for the PD, I anticipate the budget you approve in 2025 for PD will be less than what you approved in '24, and that's our most costly item, you know? Now, fire will be a different story, but in PD, we are ready for this huge flux that we went through, but I think in a good way, we're caught lower than we thought we'd be, so I imagine there's some savings there, but I don't know what that is off the top of my head, Councilman. Sure Megan does, or we can get you a report.
Sure.
I know recently you asked about retirements, and I know that report, if you don't have it right now, I know it's coming to you on the way, but about number of retirees taking place in the Hammond Police Department.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry. It's, I know, I saw it just today, so I imagine it's coming to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Hey, Mayor.
Hi.
Questions for you. Speaking of budgets, I know we'll be getting those soon. With the changes with police and fire, and we know that everyone is looking for those raises
Yes, ma'am.
um, those things will probably be happening even more even in the future. What is your anticipation on where we're looking and how we're going to maintain those dollars? And we can talk off record, like maintaining
No, 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 I'm trying to figure.
Like to maintain, continuing to have to give those raises. What are you looking at?
Oh, that's my job every day of my life, Councilwoman, is
Right, to maintain or how we're going to continue, because we know casino dollars are going down
Yeah.
and those things, so
Yeah.
just wondering where's your, your head at on those things?
Thankfully, Councilwoman, thank you for the question. We've been anticipating the casino revenue one day dropping, hoping that it would never happen, and it's happened. And I did a report a few months ago with the help of the controller to try to like determine, are we in good shape? Are we in bad shape? Overall, like total revenue sources, right? Including miscellaneous revenue, including our assessed value, including the local option income tax, all sources of revenue, and including gaming. Where are we? Are we up or are we down, right? We're doing, the good thing is, now, I'm not thrilled, obviously, what's happened to Horseshoe. I think there's a lot of people at fault for what's going on, okay? But we've done our job, thankfully, where the other revenue sources are sort of saving us. Everything's sort of picking us up. Well, revenue for the gaming boats dropped, water department's doing really well, thankfully. Our assessed values did really well this year, thankfully, you know? So like all these other revenue sources that, we increased the assessed value of our city a billion dollars over 20 years, and that's saving us right now. So thankfully, Councilwoman, and, and if you ask me, Councilwoman Katrina, I think it's bleak about the casino revenue. I think it's bleak. I think that we're at 22 million a year right now. Councilman Mark, when we got here, it was at 35, 36 almost every single year, right? We're at 22 now. I don't think it's going to stay here. I think it's going to go down. And if it goes down, where does it go down to? Does it go down to 15, 16? That's when the one on Halseth opens, and what happens when the one downtown opens? Where does it go then? And they're not investing in this boat. When's the last time you saw a Horseshoe casino commercial? So if they're not going to invest in the boat, and if people are going to just go to the new boat, I think we got to be realistic here. I agree with you, Councilwoman. That's why I did that report, and after I did the report, I felt better about my life, about our life, because it seems like, even though we're losing on the casino game right now, it seems like we're winning on other games. It's helping us a lot, and it's encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I appreciate the question, because it's, believe me, I'm signing contracts, and I want to make sure we can pay for them, right? So I appreciate the question, and I'm willing to sit down with you and show you what I went through. It's, it's interesting.
Will do.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm not used to talking this much at a council meeting. I apologize. I had a coffee right before I got here.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman, I appreciate all you very much. I know sometimes we scrap with each other, but if we made a billion dollars over 20 years, it's because the council and the mayor worked well together. That's why we did it. If we were fighting with each other, we wouldn't have done what we did, so, thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, next up, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 26, 2024 meeting and place them on file.
Second.
Been a motion of second by Councilman Tyler. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next up, approval of claims.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Vines.
I move for approval, approval of claims dated August 21, 2024, and ending with claims dated September 4, 2024, claim number 7511 through claim number 7787 inclusive, in the amount of $5,749,131.32, I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Whorple. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Council.
I move to amend in claim number 7788 for the Joe B. Memorial fundraiser in the sum of $300.
There's been a motion to amend our claims, 7781, in the amount of $300.
88, 7788.
7788, yeah. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Rickles.
Yes. Amendment passes 9-0. Do I have any discussion on the claims as amended? Discussion on the claims? Any discussion on the claims? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Whorple.
Yes.
Rickles.
Yes. Claims passes 9-0 as amended. Next up, public hearing.
Item A. Ordinance 24-18 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. In ordinance of the common councils of the City of Hammond, Indiana, upon recommendation of the Hammond Economic Development Commission, designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Do I have a motion? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes. Anybody would like to speak on the, on the 24-18? Anybody like to speak on 24-18?
George Stoy, I must have missed a memo. What area are we talking about here? Oh, we got a certain area. Can you get more Orwellian? Good God.
Mr. President.
Yes, this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to address the public hearing? All right, public hearing is closed. Um, next up, communications. Any communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, I would like to announce that the Hammond Historical Society and the United Steel Workers invite you to join them for the unveiling of a monument to honor the memory of four standard steel car workers that were killed and 62 that were injured on September 9, 1919 at the corner of Columbia and Highland. That will be this Saturday, September 14, 11:00 a.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. These, the four gentlemen who died were from Hammond, and this was just the beginning of the sacrifices that men and women have made over the years for our union, so please come out and acknowledge their sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other communications? I have one, Hessville Halloween movie night, Movies at the Park will be on September 27 at 7:00 p.m. at Hessville Park. We're going to have Halloween movies, which includes The Great Pumpkin. It's The Great Pumpkin, Charlie Brown, and Hocus Pocus. It's free admission. Bring your own chairs and snacks. It'll be at Hessville Park, right off Kennedy Avenue. It's on September 27. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. The East Hammond-Poleman Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, September 17, 6:00 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School Wednesday, October 2, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet Tuesday, October 1st, 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 19th, 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch, I apologize, at the last meeting, I misspoke. Uh, there was a change in scheduling because of all of the changes going on at Irving School. So I had initially given, um, this Friday as the date. Uh, but instead, it will be Tuesday, September 10th, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School in the Art Room. And that is a bilingual program. Uh, Whiting-Robertsdale will meet Thursday, September 12th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. And, uh, the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will be coming in October. Uh, stay tuned for a date. As soon as I get their verification, I will pass that along. And once again, I urge everyone to come to a crime watch meeting. You find out a lot of very useful information, not only about your neighborhood, but about your city. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilwoman. I like to, there's been a slight change for the Hessville Crime Watch because of the Gene Shepherd Center being under construction. The meeting is instead going to be at the Hanson Community Center on Martha and Alabama. Uh, HC3 has allowed, uh, them to use it during the construction period. So it will be at the Hanson Community Center, Alabama and Martha.
That's indefinitely.
That's, right now, it's just September or maybe October.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you. The Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will hold its next meeting Tuesday, September 24th at 6:30 at the Hammond Mohawks at 141st and Calumet Avenue. And I received correspondence from Nora Caden from the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, who will, uh, be coming from Indianapolis to give us an update about, uh, the upcoming cleanup of, uh, soil at 341st Street, the old Taylor Chain slash Dombrowski and Holmes property across from Hermit's Park. Uh, she's, will be giving us a timeline on the cleanup and what kind of, uh, elements they will be looking at when they go digging or doing their boring. Uh, Tuesday, September 24th, 6:30. Important meeting for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
I'll be bringing out ordinances 24-16 and 24-17 for third and final passage.
Okay. And 17. We also bring out 24-18?
24-18.
Okay.
Council as a whole bring that out.
Okay. All right, any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is closed. Next up, ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance, uh, 24-16 sponsored by Councilman Salinas and ordinance amending Title VII of the Hammond Municipal Code, Traffic Schedule III, and setting a speed zone limit on Holman Avenue from Sibley to Douglas Street to 20 miles per hour.
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to pass, uh, ordinance 24-16.
Second.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
Uh, this is a speed zone limit decrease on Holman Avenue from Sibley to Douglas from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. This is, uh, complimentary to the, uh, Jeff Speck overall downtown Hammond, uh, plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 24-16 passes 9-0.
Ordinance 24-17 sponsored by Councilman Rakos and ordinance amending Title VII of the Hammond Municipal Code, Traffic Schedule III, and setting a speed zone limit on Kennedy Avenue from 165th to 169th Street to 20 miles per hour.
Yes, I make a motion that we pass, uh, 24-17.
Got a motion, a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
As Clerk Golick explained, it's another speed zone limit decrease on Kennedy Avenue from 165th to 169th. We're going to go from 25 miles per hour to 20 miles per hour. Thank you.
And this is also an ordinance that puts it in Indiana Code, which makes it a lot more easily enforced. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
24-17 passes 9-0.
Ordinance 24-18 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana upon recommendation of the Hammond Economic Development Commission designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
I move for final passage of 24-18.
Second.
Got a motion and second for 24-18. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
This ordinance, George, has to do with, uh, a tax abatement for a five-story hotel going up in the Marina District, specifically where the old car wash is standing right now. There's approximately two acres there that Nash Patel, who developed the three hotels at, by the Buffalo Wings, uh, is the developer for this hotel. It will be five stories on two acres, about 102 units. About $5 million in construction costs. From start to finish, the building should take approximately six months. So it's behind the new car wash where the old car wash stands now. It's on that property. So about two acres. He commits to the conditions of the abatement, at least 50 to 51% of, uh, the people who work there will be Hammond residents. He has a track record at the other three hotels. He's at about 70% of, of employees there are Hammond residents. And I'm, I'm hopeful that with this 10-year tax abatement and that that going up, that maybe a couple of the other vacated gas stations on the boulevard may get developed as well. So it's specifically where the old car wash stands now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kowinski. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
24-18 passes 9-0.
President Rakos, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, the introduction of ordinances, we have none. Next up, resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 24R14 sponsored by Councilman Salinas. A resolution authorizing the use of recycled materials for certain demolition activity within the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I make a motion that we accept, uh, Resolution 24R14.
Second.
Got a motion and second by Councilman Spatelli. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
This, uh, resolution has to deal with the proper compacting materials at the demolition site of the former hospital, St. Margaret's. Um, this is in the best interest of the City of Hammond to obtain this property for future development. And, um, I know we do have some specifics that were outlined in our agreement. And I'd like to refer that at this time to our city engineer, Dean Button. Could, uh, perhaps go through some of the, uh, details, please? Thank you.
Sure, councilman. So, yeah. So the current Hammond ordinance allows for clean sand to be used as backfill in demolition sites, right? So, and it really contemplated nor, our normal demolition sites. I think under the mayor, mayor's, uh, tenure, we've had 600 individual demolitions throughout the city. Uh, I'm probably shorting that, but I know it's, it's well over 500. And those are, those are residences, right? Well, so now we're talking about a large complex, uh, of the, uh, the hospital. And the, um, the property owner had petitioned the city to, uh, find an alternative that would limit the, um, backfill material to recycled concrete and sand, um, because they had this surplus material on site as part of their demolition work. Uh, we stipulated that only a certain level of deleterious material, that is, uh, asphalt, um, brick, those sorts of things, would be allowed as backfill, but predominantly 95% of the material would be recycled concrete from the demolition of the building. Um, and then we fine-tuned what would go below the water line because we wanted coarse aggregate to, to not impede the flow of the groundwater through the area. And then that which was above the groundwater area be able to form what's called a proctor curve, which can reasonably demonstrate the compactability of the soil in, in the backfill. And so that's what we've agreed to with the, uh, with the contractor, uh, and the hospital, the hospital's primary contractor, ton of blank. And so we recommend approval of this action. Does that satisfy your request?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
24R14 passes 9-0.
Item B, Resolution 24R15 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council confirming Resolution 24R-13 that designated and established a certain area of the City of Hammond, Indiana as the Town Place Suites Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions of assessed value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Hammond pursuant to Indiana Code
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
I move for passage of 24R-15.
Got a motion and a second by Councilman Spatelli. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
This is a procedural step leading to the tax abatement. That's a necessary step to take. And I just want to let George know that if I hadn't been sponsoring this, I wouldn't know where it was either, based on, based on how it's written. So you're right, at least if it would have said the Marina District area, that would have honed it down some. So I get, I get your frustration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
24R15, R15 passes 9-0.
Item C, Resolution 24R-16 sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski. A resolution of the Hammond City Council granting assent hospitality and assessed valuation deduction, a tax abatement, for qualified tangible real property pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kowinski.
Move for passage of 24R-16.
Got a motion and a second by Councilman Spatelli. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman.
This is, uh, this is the final step for, uh, pursuing that tax abatement and granting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vannett.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
24-16 passes 9-0.
President Rakos, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, new and unfinished business. Is there any new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed? Next up is public expression. First up, Gary. Right short.
Good evening, everybody. So Sylvester says so too. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to thank Dave Warple again for doing our streets and sidewalks and curbs. Um, I've had two neighbors now pass away. One was mid-eighties, Richard Tredway. And then here, another neighbor, Chuck Ingram, just passed away about a week ago. But he really, both the neighbors, just loved the outcome, getting the new streets, sidewalks, the drive aprons, all that stuff. You know, just wonderful. More people are using it. It is wonderful. So, and I say, they wanted to thank Dave again and everybody that was part of getting that all done. It's very, very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, George Stoya. All right, next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, council. Hope you're all doing well. At Mayor's Night Out last week, another horrible example of misdirection was on full display. Mayor McDermott first spoke about how he does not like the pedestrian bridge that he now claims is an indot design. Let's remind people, it was his design of Governor's Parkway Bridge in Hessville that failed to address the public safety hazards in the first place that, first place that led to the pedestrian bridge. The pedestrian bridge designed by the city of Hammond was a desperate effort to address the colossal failure that will destroy Hessville as we know it. The mayor's bridge completely ignored Hammond schoolchildren who attend three public schools. By locating the bridge too far away, it was proven it will not service the children or the parents, teachers, and emergency vehicles that use Grand Avenue. The mayor has blocked the promise made by indot given to us an estimate of an underpass on Grand Avenue. Let's also remind everybody that the Federal Railway Administration recommended a Grand Avenue solution. That solution was rejected by Mayor McDermott and our councilman Scott Rakos with no reason given to the residents. Mayor McDermott and the city engineer are now separating themselves, they did it the other night, from the proposed bridge claiming it is an indot design. Why? Because it has lost favor with the public and is now seen as a political liability for him in light of his recent national media attention. Downstate Republicans in Indianapolis are more than happy to let this Democratic administration dangle incoherently by agreeing to the city's project. The federal government still has this project on hold, counter to what the city engineer claimed. Let's hope these professional experts can see through this charade and stop this project. It is time for the Common Council to give us the underpass estimate promised to us, to the residents, and stop the misinformation and obstruction. We deserve it. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, Jenna.
Good evening, everyone. So like Ken mentioned, we were at the newest or the most recent, um, Mayor's Night Out. Uh, a question came up regarding the cost and analysis studies for an underpass on Grand Avenue that was promised to the community. As you all know, the mayor and his team came up with an, with an idea to build an overpass bridge to help solve the safety issues regarding trains. We all know this bridge is not and was never going to solve this problem. The mayor knew this, and the more he received criticism for this project, the more he defended it. It was clear to the community that the city officials lacked transparency when they could hardly get a word in about the project. At Mayor's Night Out, the mayor completely dodged the underpass question and said Governor's Parkway's indot project as if he had nothing to do with the design. It doesn't take a genius mind to see that this is an attempt to take the negative attention off of himself. Think about it like this. If you got done designing a project that you knew would improve the safety of your community, wouldn't you be so proud to share it with the public? Along this journey, I have met lots of different people. Many people are aware of the lies, fear, and manipulation tactics that the mayor and his team employs. This alone gives me, gives me hope for the future of the city because the more people that are aware, the less power the officials have through manipulation.[1756.61]